Welcome, everybody. It is 4:02. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. April 11th. Um, I will go through. Sorry, I'm just trying to maneuver screens here. Oh, maybe she'll have it. Oh, yeah, there it is. Yay. Okay. Um. I know Howard is not here tonight, so Abby Dahman.
Here.
Bryce Erlich.
Here.
Um. Joey Edwards.
Here.
Lupe Babadilla.
Here.
And Jamie Seifer.
Here. Cypher, by the way.
Cypher, oh, my gosh, someday I'm gonna do it. Just get rid of the E. Okay. Uh, county commissioners, do we have any of our county commissioners? Commissioner Munch? Commissioner Marcella? And Commissioner Fiedler? I don't think I saw anybody on yet. Okay. We have minutes to approve from the 21st, and I think we just got those a little bit ago today. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at them? Okay, cool. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes for March 21st, 2022.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor of approving minutes from 3:21, 22? Hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any questions? Okay. Um, we will move down to new business, and really, I'm just gonna hand it over to Anne. She's just got a bunch of updates for us tonight and some things to discuss as far as what our outlook looks like moving forward here.
Thank you so much. I'm going to, I'm trying to get a link over really quick here to Commissioner Marcela, so I'm gonna do that, and then I will screen share just kind of the presentation and the updates that I sent over to everyone, so give me one second. And. I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to yell while I was not muted. I'm trying to, trying to shout something to Jeff about the link. I just sent it to Kayla as well, Sarah, so. Saying some prompts, and I will change it in the invite. I think that's the problem is that Ameet had noticed earlier today that I had the old, because the invite is so old, it had the, the old. Okay, so Ameet, so the, what is posted on the website is this link. Should be this link in the, okay, great, alright. So everything, it's just the old calendar invite that has the wrong one, so. Okay. Sorry. That's what I was trying to figure. Thank you. You bet. So, yeah, tonight, I was just kind of hoping to bring everybody up to speed, talk about some different ways that the planning commission can be as engaged in some kind of community development stuff that's happening in the community as well. And Jamie had reached out, you know, wanting to find those opportunities, and some of all of you have at different times. And so we're just gonna kind of update you. I'm gonna start with items that are kind of, are pending, and then talk about some situational awareness throughout the community of things that you might want to be engaged in. So the first thing is that, that I have had conversations with Dola about doing this Planning 101 training. It's really good. It's about a two-hour training, and it hits on just a wealth of information that's really beneficial for the, any members of an elected board, actually. So I will probably also be inviting to this training our Board of Adjustment and a Board of Review as well, because there will be information within it. When we can set the date, that would be beneficial for those boards and just take an opportunity to be able to stretch that education across several different boards. So hopefully, I'm hoping that within the next week, I'm going to have a better idea of exactly when we can get this scheduled, send it out with a couple of different options, so that we have enough time to make sure that everyone can attend. So just a quick update on that. The board has, where, has approved the backcountry resolution. So the resolution went to the board this Monday. They have approved it with one slight change to that to, to which, which they wanted to include a memorializing so that forevermore, we'll make sure that we always engage with state and federal land management partners. We, through that whole process, we've talked about how critical that engagement is, and so there was just some space within the resolution that would strengthen it if, if we added that. So I have prepared that and just today sent that to the board for their approval, and once we just get done with that wordsmithing, it will go of record. So that's pretty exciting stuff. The next item here is, I just want to make sure that everyone has received the link to the Google Doc Drive with File 2206. It's the 301 taper drive subdivision exemption. Can I just get a thumbs up if you've received it? Okay, if you have any questions, it's kind of the last bullet point, but if you have any questions about that file, please reach out, chat about it. There has been an interpretate or a kind of an overview added to it. If you go back in, it just kind of gives just the whole kind of history and the Cliff Notes actually on, on the application. So to better explain a subdivision exemption, the board has the legislative ability to exercise the, an exemption from subdivision regulations in, in unique situations. It is not used, however, to intentionally circumvent subdivision, but there are times that there are times that, you know, it makes sense. There are mistakes that have been made in, in, in the, in the history of land use. So sometimes this is used to rectify those kind of things, and I think that is the basis of what the applicant is drawing on for this, this application is that they believe through a series of kind of mishaps, the current parcel that is looking to be developed is having difficulties. And, and so I'm not going to get too much into any one of these applications. I can have conversations with each of you if you have questions about them, but just more to make sure that you, you've seen the materials, you're familiar with how to get in and look at all those documents. They are all on the website. All submitted applications are on the website for the public to take a look at. And that meeting is scheduled, or that hearing is scheduled for May night. So the staff report will be coming the week before, which will just summarize all of the information, all the evidence and research that's been put into the application and brought forward for the planning commission and the board to make informed decisions. So please reach out anytime if you have any questions. Currently, these next three files are in completeness review. They've just recently come in, and they will be pending files that I would anticipate will be coming to you end of May. Hopefully, maybe we'll get all of these in, because the two site plan reviews that, that you see there, File 2211 and File 2212, planning, those are files that are site plan reviews. One, because 2211, the mid-site plan review in the scenic conservation overlay is because they're going to propose that a utility go into that overlay. And so the planning commission needs to review that, approve, approve the conditions or deny. And the next is City on a Hill is looking to rehabilitate and renovate 1717 Poplar Street into a new commercial development. So both of those site plan reviews, because they are a planning commission deciding process, they only require a two-week notice. So if I, if those are sent, if I deem them complete this week and send them in for advertising, those could still be heard in May. And I, I definitely feel like that is the case with the one in the scenic conservation overlay. I think that it is complete, ready to go. City on a Hill, that particular parcel has had some unique attributes to it, and so there's quite a bit to overcome there just between all of those. That's gonna take a little bit more of a completeness review, but if things are tracking well, then I think that one will be coming to you in May as well. And then, so all of these are fairly, not that any application is, is easy, but some of these are less, have less layers to them than when we're gonna get into PUD and subdivision. And so then the third file that's currently in completeness review is another RM rezone, just exactly like the one you just heard. Three more parcels have come forward to join together to get adjacency and look to rezone out of RM into recreation. So those are the three up and coming. The next items are staff code amendments. So it is for anybody that is just joining the planning commission, um, regularly staff goes through and, and updates the land development code. So we just did a incredible huge lift with backcountry zoning, creating a zone district is probably one of the biggest code amendments that you can undertake and, and achieve. So kudos to all that hard work. These, the ones I'm gonna kind of describe in a little bit of detail are also in development, but I just want you to have a little bit of knowledge that they're going on. Again, reach out if you have questions or thoughts on them. These will all go through a process of, of a public hearing process, and there will be staff reports and information brought forward on all of these. So this is just to kind of give you an awareness that they're happening. First are special use permits. So we don't necessarily have anything in our code currently that addresses how we process administer and regulate use on county roads. And so this is something that is underway, and so we're looking that, developing a process and administering these similar to the same way that we do to special event permits and temporary use permits. So in those cases, we, we look to all of the impacted stakeholders, which typically are, and we call them our review agencies. And so that is usually Public Works, emergency services, public health, building and land use, sheriff, the city of Leadville, whomever would be impacted or would help support activities in, in a certain manner. And so right now, staff is working on kind of the process and how to administer these. And then the Board of County Commissioners will be working largely on this engagement. We're also looking at ways of maybe modeling after how the Forest Service looks at their road use and to kind of help guide us through the guidelines on how we would administer and, and the use of county roads. And when I finished, or I could stop right now, Commissioner Munch, do you have any, anything else that you would like to kind of put in there? I was just trying to give the 10,000-foot view on these to start with.
Well, so just that we're gonna try to go through a pretty transparent public process, but also move as swiftly as we can in preparation for potentially the winter season.
Thank you so much. Yeah, absolutely. So, so staff will be working more on, on the technical side and to assist the board through that engagement and just taking the research that's been brought forward with some preliminary conversations in a real usable format to help facilitate that for the board. The next is the creation of a new use. So historically through the years, we have had so many asks about a way in which to have a parcel of land to be able to be used for special events, not necessarily wanting to come in every year for a new special event permit, because a certain land, area of land could be vetted and in a manner that would allow it to continue in perpetuity as long as certain conditions were met. So this venue slash special event past staff, and even I think even myself included, have tried to kind of put these in boxes that don't necessarily work, like group camps, vacation lodges, but they're not really that. They're more of a special event, someplace that could hold, host wedding ceremonies, or corporate retreats, or yoga retreats. And the idea is to incorporate a new use into our use table. I would say that our table of uses has lots of spaces in it that need to, or uses because of, of changing times, different ways that people are using their land, small business models. So the work behind this is looking at trying to balance and identifying a very viable small business while also looking at what kind of impacts to mitigate. And I see, Sarah, you have your hand raised, so certainly happy to take a break.
Sorry, Anne. I, I know we're not really debating right now, but as you're, and we did kind of touch, you kind of updated me on this thought. Um, I just wanna, just having a thought myself, maybe this, if in our joint discussions, we might see that a special use permit would be appropriate too, and/or I was thinking about housing and like, are we actually encouraging the wrong thing? I don't, I don't know. Sorry.
I think, I think especially use permit, I, my thought about that is that they would be, you know, those wouldn't probably last more than annually, and so I was, you know, so I think the difference between a conditional use permit and a special use permit, just in my first, my first thought about that would be that I think especially use permit has a shorter termination, and that conditional use permit runs with land, could even, could even survive change in ownership as long as it stays consistent. So I think it would just be considering, you know, which, which way would be better if, if an annual permit would be better, or to actually add the use in as a way in which people could develop properties, you know, to use in perpetuity. So certainly, that, those are great ideas, thoughts, and talking points, and we could look at the two different ones. Heather?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if for clarification, like, we're not talking about conditional using special events themselves. It's really just like a venue, right? It's just that that's a use. So it'd be like freight. Us saying, okay, yep, you know, freight was trying to do it in the county rather than the city. Right? It's not like we're saying, okay, somebody who wants to do a retreat gets a conditional use, and then they get to like, figure out where to do it. It's, we're just talking land use here. So it would be this piece of land, we think would be really great, and this is how we would do our yoga retreats on it every year. It would work just like another conditional use permit as a business. I'm just wondering if that's where, like, some confusion is.
That's a great point, Heather. Yeah, these would be, this would be adding a use to use table to be granted a conditional use, which in these, you know, a venue can, would be a structure. And so again, having that reliance to put the money into the development of it, that it can run with the land versus maybe having to come in for something that would, would have to be adjusted annually. So it might be a little more equitable as a, as a conditional use instead of under a special use permit. That's, that's a good point.
I have a question.
Sure.
Finders. Um. I guess in terms of like, when the actual event takes place, would there still be a review of like emergency access, like some of those parameters, or?
No, those things would be done at the time of, so it would be a one-time review of the property. So like, you know, like, like we've done group camps or vacation lodges, or even resorts. So we would do it for every time that they hosted an event. What we would want to see is their operational plan, and they would ask at the time for parameters like, we'll host weddings, wedding receptions, we'll never exceed 100 people. This is our parking plan. This is our access. This is, so here's our water, here's our sanitation. So we would look to vet this entirely in one setting. We may, there may be conditions if it was approved that would monitor it. You could even say it would need an annual review. That's, that is something that's built into the code already that says conditional use permits may be reviewed on an annual basis. So you can always condition it that this is one. We think the impacts of this potential proposal need warrant reevaluating them manually. So that might be a way, if, if it was decided, wow, these impacts could be borderline concerning, or can we condition it so that we feel like that impact could be properly mitigated? So I, I think that, but it would be, to answer your question, Abby, this is gonna be a proposed use, and maybe I shouldn't have put, now that I'm looking the way I put it, I don't think I should have put special event. I think I should have put special event facility, because that, I think, would have communicated kind of the use that I'm coming up with a little bit better than the event itself. It's more creating a venue with probably built structures and, and a facility versus looking at every individual event. And in their operational plan, they'd have to be very specific. This is what we're gonna do. We're going to, our model is holistic corporate retreats. And this is our building, and, and so they would come in like any conditional use permit with a pretty specific operational plan. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and I like that clarification. I just, you know, I think, yeah, should they ever deviate from like their standard event offering, then, then, yeah, you would definitely still want eyes to make sure that public safety and all of that is still in place.
Great point.
And, and I, and I know we have plenty of counties around us too that we can, we can use for benchmarking on this one.
Very good, very good point, and that's right. We don't have an amendment process. Sometimes I wonder about that as a code amendment too, not to take us down the rabbit hole for, but just for one second, and I think sometimes I have wondered whether or not an amendment process to a conditional use permit wouldn't, would be a good amendment, code amendment, because, you know, there are times that I, I think sometimes we try to consider a little bit of phasing in something, but right now, if you do want to do something different that you had never introduced, that we have embedded, then you go all the way back to the beginning and you have to do a new conditional use permit. That's not all bad. A lot of times, that's a really great thing, and it's very needed, but sometimes there are small changes. Anyway, talking point for another day. Sorry, I can get very sidetracked really easy. Sorry about that. But anyway, you're absolutely right. If they don't propose it within their conditional use permit, and they want to start operating our offering in something different than we've never looked at before, put eyes on, then, then the reality is that they have to go back through the, the process again. And that's the way our code, code is built. In a lot of cases, that's a really good thing, because sometimes a, a new use could, or a new aspect could come on board that really needs to, to be taken a deeper dive into. Um, the next is adding accessory dwelling units in the business zone districts. So currently, accessory dwelling units are prohibited. I even looked it up because I thought maybe it was a typo, because we did accessory dwelling units. I think it's 16, 15, 16. We amended the code to address them, and Business Zone District is our highest density, residential density other than RM, which hopefully soon we won't have a lot of. And so I think it makes sense to look at adding accessory dwelling units in the Business Zone District as we are trying to find ways to bring about ways to support workforce and affordable housing goals. So this would check two boxes. I think many of you are aware that we are the recipients of the planning grant, where we're looking to try to find ways to support workforce and affordable housing goals through code amendments. So I think it checks that box potentially, as well as the Village of Twin Lakes is kind of an ongoing situation of concern around environmental potential hazards, because there is not centralized utilities. So we have very old septic systems and wells in, living together in a community where there is potential for groundwater contamination. So and all of the Village of Twin Lakes is zoned business. So in allowing accessory dwelling units in the Business Zone District, there's a potential to put some of these smaller homes on one up to code septic system. Instead of trying to find ways, you know, so this is when you think about plating of lots. These lots are similar to city lots size-wise, which is fine when you're on centralized infrastructure, but when you're trying to support wells and septic systems on such small lots. So when we have the opportunity to do lot consolidations, which is not unusual at all in the village to have an owner have more than one lot, we can consolidate those lots, potentially have a primary home, consider the other dwelling unit as an accessory, and then put them on one septic system. Currently, you can't have an accessory in the Business Zone District in the Village of Twin Lakes. So really feel that this checks two boxes. It's a, it's a win on the planning grant side of trying to encourage higher density in our highest density. And a lot of times in the Business Zone District, in, in some areas, we, we do have centralized utilities. And then in the Village of Twin Lakes, a lot of those, the other thing that you have to be able to do in order to do this is have the ability for a well to support having two dwellings. That's not gonna happen very often, but it does happen in the Village of Twin Lakes, because their water rights are, are senior rights. They're, they, they've had them and been in existence for such a period of time, that a lot of time, they do have water that will support vacating lot lines and having two homes on the same parcel. So it, it kind of carves out this very unique situation for the village to, to help look at ways to support some good environmental choices moving forward. So that's the basis of that one. And then the last is, I've been working with Michael Yurman, who is our consultant, who, from the Southern Economic Development Corporation, Southern Colorado Economic Development District. There we go. And Michael and I have been looking at the code together, and we have found an opportunity in there to regulate and make it mandatory that PUDs negotiate deed restriction or affordable workforce housing in consideration for density increases within the PUD negotiations. So PUD meaning planned unit development. And a planned unit development is when a developer comes in and says, I would like to create my own zoning. I would like to, and in, in exchange for that, they enter into a negotiation with the county to, for trade-offs. So they're looking for typically, it's, if they want a higher density than the underlying zone district will allow, and in turn for that, we would create through this code amendment, a mandatory conversation with the developer about a percentage of the property coming into line with the affordable housing and workforce housing, community housing, that's what I should say, community housing goals. And as part of that negotiation. So there has been some, I would say, loose language in the code about it, and this would come in and make it more intentional and, and give a very strong basis to have those conversations. So again, checks two boxes. It helps with the planning grant. And, and I should mention that, that we hope the planning, the outcome of all of the work associated with the planning grant is the ability to apply for the innovation grant. So the next grant opportunity would be a half a million dollars that could be utilized in helping bring built housing into reality. So it's a significant achievement in, in reaching all of the goals associated with the planning grant. Jamie, I see you have your hand raised.
Thanks, Anne. Yeah, I just had a quick question about the conversation. Am I correct in assuming that there's like, and maybe it's inclusionary zoning that would require an amount of the homes to be quote-unquote affordable, and that this is like the middle step of we're at least requiring a conversation about that? I'm just curious kind of like where we start that conversation. I think this is great. I think it's awesome that they have to talk to us about it. I just don't quite know exactly what that, what we're requiring them to do. I just don't quite know exactly what that, what we're requiring them to do in that conversation. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, it does. So what this would do, it would be mandatory to. So we've got a little bit of work to do on it to give you the exact parameters of of what that mandatory, if it would be a percentage, if it would be, you know, something, but I would say that you could liken it to inclusionary zoning. They're two completely different things. They're two different tools. But you could liken it to that because in inclusionary zoning, it's straight across the board. It just comes in and gives a percentage that you do X percent based on how many dwelling units you have. If it's fifteen, twenty percent, whatever of a development has to be a certain deed restricted AMI. And 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 you know, that's just, that's what inclusionary zoning basically is. So this would liken itself to that. And we haven't landed exactly on if it would be a percentage, if it would be. But this would be, this would only apply to PUDs, it wouldn't apply to major subdivisions or or minor subdivisions, which inclusionary zoning is kind of straight across the board. Or it it can be, it can be designed into kind of what into different parameters. But this would be just specific to PUD and and normally the reason somebody's going to go PUD is because of density. And so they'd be similar, very much similar zoning tools Jamie should use. And and I think the the discussion about inclusionary zoning will be down the road. We've had one discussion about it and you know, it it may be another discussion that's coming up. I think we're also looking at ways to incentivize as well as regulate. So PUD is kind of that that great the give and take. So it's kind of that automatic great space of where the developer is getting something and we're getting something and we have that negotiation. So I think that's the first place that we're introducing it, whereas inclusionary zoning is more of regulation more than a negotiation.
Awesome, very helpful. Thank you, Anne.
Sure, sure. Great questions. I did a whole lot of talking. Does anybody have any questions about those before I kind of give some situational, just kind of updates? And then I'm going to ask the commissioners to kind of help me on those as well.
Well, I was just gonna, I had a sort of similar question or comment as as Jamie's and at least, I mean, to me, it seemed like, yeah, I want to say, I don't want to say like inclusionary zoning light, but it's sort of, it it it's right now, my sense is like PUD sort of has the flexibility for negotiation, but not a lot of like criteria or guidance to staff on what the boundaries of that negotiation are. So I think my, I mean, my hope or sort of, I mean, I think something we should all start thinking about and discussing is like, I mean, yeah, like, we're shooting for like a formula to guide the negotiation or some like principles and criteria? You know, could, I mean, again, in my mind is I'm turning my head around, you know, housing more and more is like, yeah, there's sort of like a basic negotiation of like more affordable housing for more density. And that's how you make the developer still have things pencil out while getting some of what we need in the community. So how, you know, if if we go for something more clear and formulaic, you risk it not working right in the special circumstance of some PUD application. If you make it bigger with principles, it's bigger. So anyway, that like to me, that's sort of the discussion to be had and thinking to be done is like how yeah, how how specific, but but I do think it would be good to give staff guidance for some of those discussions that get had with developers before they sort of get like way down the road and things. You know, especially come to the V O C C when it's like painful for everyone to go back with a very different line of thinking. So anyway, that was my.
I think that's a great point, Jeff. And I so we'll, through this amendment, we will propose a formula and 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 then it'll be open for everyone's input and and thoughts and and and, you know, great thing about code is that it's it's movable. And so, you know, it may have to be. It may just have to be fluid as we as we go through this of, you know, where and how aggressive and and those kind of things. But when we bring the the like draft code amendment forward, we will have a starting place and some suggestions for, you know, kind of, kind of best practices, kind of ideas. And then and then we can fine tune it into what makes the best sense for the community and for, you know, for everyone. So but we will come forward with some some ideas about that and and then we'll work it into what the best outcome is. And with the idea that, you know, this will be probably a little bit of a changing landscape as we look to guide ourselves through these really difficult times. So any other thoughts, questions, anybody that I? Great, golly, you guys are too easy tonight or you're just really tired. So I, some really other points I wanted to bring up is that I I know I sent it out on Thursday before the very first water class on Friday, but I did attend that first water class. It was great. The next one, I think, is the twenty first. So if you are at all interested, the other thing to know is that if you go in and the water class, if you just want to do that, is twenty five dollars. But if you go in and you sign up for the water class and the whole conference, so the Rocky Mountain Land Institute had an amazing land use conference on the twenty fifth and twenty sixth of March, you get access to a bunch of those sessions. And there are some really good sessions in there. So you get a, they give you a coupon for fifty dollars off, so the whole registration is fifty dollars. If you want to register for that, and we will take care of that on your behalf. So reach out to me, I can register you for the class or myself or Marla. Surprise, Marla. And we'll help get you registered if you want to do that. So it's really the the first. And and then you'll have access to all of the recordings. So if you miss this Friday, you can go back and watch it again. And it's just really interesting. It's great information. There are some really scary things happening with drought conditions. And so I think it's it's a real kind of call to action time. And I think it's really a good time to be very mindful about land use and how it goes into consideration of with water, water and land use planning together. So I think I think they're really timely and good information to have and a good education. So that's my plug. If you want to register, let us know, we'll get you taken care of and and that's in our budget to take care of. So just wanted to extend that out again. And then three really great talking points this evening. One is that I would like to invite our housing director. I know I introduced her briefly and in one of our meetings to come to our next meeting and give you an update on housing. There's a lot happening currently. The, there's discussion on guidelines around deed restriction and creating preferences and priorities and a tiered system for who qualifies for deed restricted properties when they become within our inventory of housing stock. And so those are are great conversations to be part of. The next meeting, I believe, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, is the twenty first, next Thursday, there's a discussion on the possibility of joining the city's housing authority and becoming a multi-jurisdictional housing authority and the benefits to the community and and how they would play into the big picture of kind of our new housing department and and focus on community housing goals. So and I can, anyone that doesn't know about that, wants information on it, reach out to me. I will make sure that you get that information, the housing coalition meetings, if there's any any area in housing that you would like to be involved in that you're unaware of, please reach out, we'll get you plugged in so that you can participate in all of those discussions and be part of of the decisions. This is a real critical time when a lot of good things are happening. So if you have any questions about that, please reach out. And then I'm going to defer, there's two other things I just want to put on your plates tonight. One is wildfire mitigation and a community planning around that, that Sarah, I'm going to ask her to help me out with. And the other is mass transit planning. And I'm hoping Kayla can just share a little bit of information with that. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that there's a lot of other things happening around the applications that we're talking about from time to time. And if you want to get plugged in, if you want more information, you want to participate, just want to make sure that you have good access to that. Oh, and lastly, maybe Sarah, you can talk about wildfire as well as water. You know, I think that many of you are aware that Lake County has a water augmentation plan. And we have been in the works for quite some time on how to administer that water. And Sarah is, has been championing that for Lake County and the community. And she can speak to kind of giving us an idea where things are at if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So the wildfire, community wildfire protection plan is continuing to be amended. We've pushed about a month or two. And our next steps are planning some outreach for subdivisions to get their feedback on activities and best ways to communicate and and keep property owners and homeowners in the loop with resources. And another, I listened to a webinar today. I was interrupted a number of times and I will see if I can get a recording to share with you all. But there is a group at the state that is looking to potentially propose some code changes for building in the Wui, which is the wilder wildland urban interface area. And I need to learn more about that because through our CWPP, our Leadville District Ranger made a suggestion that we expand our Wui to include critical infrastructure and not just urban residential areas, which we all thought was a great idea to better give us potentially better access to resources becoming available. But I just wonder what that might mean really in in practice and implementation. Anne, sorry, what, anything else on water?
Yep, I think just water. When's the next, there's, when's the next meeting for community planning? Isn't there an, a meeting next week?
For for wildfire? No, I don't think so.
Okay, sorry, maybe.
No, that's okay. I'm trying to, I'm trying to organize some of those outreach efforts and it looks more likely that like May fifth and sixth, that might happen for the community meetings, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay. Maybe that's what, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, the eighteenth actually looks like an ideal date. It just feels a little soon to try to promote and get folks there. But sliding into the northern part of the county and the southern part of the county and talking about what work has been done, what may be proposed, where the resources are, and also like evacuation education and getting folks connected to and signed up for like Rivers nine on one and things like that in the event of an emergency will be part of kind of the the out, the educational component of the outreach.
Awesome. Did I, is there anything I'm missing on the water augmentation plan? I can't spell water augmentation. Oh, I put a next to you.
We, I, you may have already said it, but I just, right now, we are at the point to collect. We're we're meeting and trying to figure out what those capital improvements are for near future, potentially near future water storage and other opportunities for capital improvement projects and operation and maintenance O and M on our augmentation plan and those water facilities. And so we just need to incorporate that into kind of a performer or a a fee structure that makes sense to apply to applicants and what makes sense for compensation in potential engagement with Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District for them to administer the the plan. Any and all questions, however related to either or any of those things, please, you guys feel free to reach out and ask anytime.
Awesome. Anything else, Sarah?
Um, Kayla, I don't think Kayla's on.
Oh, okay.
Transit stuff. We've got a couple of proposals, proposed scenarios, but there's not been any decisions made and Jeff and Tim might have to help me on some of the next steps that we're waiting on if it's not kind of a formal report. And then cost analysis to to then approach any other partners, potential partners for consideration and in what level of service we might consider.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I think, I think that's right. And I think, I mean, probably the issue that might come before us collectively, you're, you know, the the planning commission and and staff is, you know, if they're going to be stops that take space or even like a park and ride somewhere to where the local transit connects to regional transit. You know, that's a thing that we might need to think about, whether we sort of have adequate use delineated there or something like that, just to make sure that we're not a barrier to think about that. And that's probably like a little ways down the road because this is an inkling of a plan, not even a commitment to really have a plan. But I mean, I think it's something that we'll get. Yeah, we'll be trying to see if it's something we can move forward financially. You know, I'm digging deeper into this this year and seeing whether it can pencil out. But I can see it pretty quickly becoming something where, you know, we don't want to be, if if there's something we can get in, you know, in the queue or just think about like if someone applied for a park and ride, what that would even be qualified for? Or if we can help the city think through that, it might be in a city location.
Does it, does the, I mean, maybe I should hold my question in in for Kayla, but part of what the consultants brought forward was to either have like a dedicated bus to within, in a certain service area within they, I think extended from like Mountain Valley Estates and Mountain View, no, maybe it was Mountain View to Lake Fork or some something, you know, similar to maybe an on-call public transit where similar, I guess, to an Uber where you, so either like a shuttle that would go throughout the community on a regular time schedule or an on-call kind of dedicated, one or two dedicated vehicles that could provide transportation within kind of that, that you'd have to dial in. There wasn't any discussion really on on coverage area other than maybe within those kind of areas. But like you said, Jeff, I mean, it's very, and these are all very conceptual points, but and there is going to be public engagement. I think continued public engagement on discussion about it. Is that, am I correct on that?
I think continued public and sort of stakeholder input, but then also, I mean, to sort of narrow down some of the options they presented. And then I think the next step is beginning to look at when you bring the stakeholders in the table, who can bring resources? And is that enough to provide the local cost share of the upfront and operating costs that are available from state federal sources?
And our ridership and everything continues to be as rebound, has it? I think I heard that it had rebounded. I think I heard that it had rebounded from pre, you know, from to, to almost pre-COVID ridership again. So our out of our like eco-transit and some at stage, that ridership is, is those numbers are coming back online to where they were before. Before COVID. With, with limitation, I think on how, how close everybody can be and they're still masked, right?
Pretty sure you have to be masked on anything that receives federal subsidy dollars. So that includes pretty much all transit.
Awesome. Okay. Sounds great. I, I, just so the planning commission knows as these, these talking points as more information comes in to staff on them, I will be forwarding them out to the planning commission to be as engaged in them as they would like and reach out to staff. If, if you say this is an area that I'd really make, I want to make sure that I'm aware of and I'd like to participate in if there's opportunities. And we'll make sure that, that you're plugged in in the right places. But generally I'll make sure the information goes out to everyone. And then if you have a special interest, please let me know and, and we will look to make sure that you're plugged in. I also want to, I just thought of something and I want to make sure, I want to just tell Lupe how much staff appreciates your willingness to help us with very little notice to translate and all of our information that we're putting out when any time we're doing an engagement project. Lupe, you, you always step up. Sometimes I feel bad because I feel like we don't give you the best lead time on things. And I just wanted to personally give you a huge thank you for the time and energy that you volunteer to the community to help us on whatever project that we're working on. He currently just helped us or is in the process of helping us with all our information on the adoption of the new building code and making sure that we get good messaging out. And so I really, really appreciate that, Lupe. And I wanted to personally extend that and make sure everybody feels the same way. So just wanted to make sure I let you know about that.
Thank you so much, Anne. And I'm just happy to do this and happy to be part of the community and support in any way that I can. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Glad I saw a hand raised to a quick.
No, I just used that.
I was wrapping emoji. Oh. Sorry. Awesome. Yay. So I'm going to hand it back over to you, Heather. I, I don't think if anybody, if there's any questions, if you think of something after the fact, please reach out anytime. We're here to support with any questions or anything that we can provide. So reach out anytime. And I appreciate all of you and all of the time that you spend on all of these issues and, and and everything that you give to the community. So thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you, Anne, for all the efforts you put into all of these. These are great. I'm glad, you know, you brought some of these things to our, you know, to the forefront for us and you're keeping tabs on things we need to work on. So I appreciate that a lot. And I know we've got probably a busy, busy few months in front of us. So I appreciate your thoroughness. If, does anybody have anything else they, you know, want to chat about tonight, talk about?
Actually, can I say real quick, I, I think I talked several months ago, this is related to the regional C dot planning and I circulated that PowerPoint slide deck about kind of getting on C dots, planning and funding timeline, sort of dealing with the gateway sections out of town as new residential and commercial development comes in, but especially new residential coming into some of what's currently more commercial highway status. And just wanted to say, where did my calendar go? The next meeting of that C dot planning effort, where did that go? May 6th. So if, if, you know, I can recirculate that PowerPoint slide. But if people had more thoughts about sort of what, you know, what we would like C dot to look like, or, you know, to be, be prioritizing in those corridors. I'll, I'll, I'll just go ahead and circulate that, but you know, feel free to chat. And I think there's time to have some, some side conversations if you want to tweak anything in there.
Sarah, go ahead.
I kind of wanted to get on a little soapbox about housing stuff too. And I personally, and the board has had some conversations, but, um, you know, that is my personal opinion. I'd love if all of you have any thoughts on how to address housing, current housing conditions and current housing inventory, aside from building vertical, because we're never going to catch up with the demand in, in building. And I think we really need to be creative and thoughtful about programs or addressing current conditions for folks. And if you all have any thoughts on that, I think it would be great to hear from you. I mean, C four is offering a program like not very much unlike the community fund, community funds paying rent and utilities, but C four is paying for maintenance and like replacement of hot water heaters or things like that, which are helping people stay in homes, especially older folks. And I think those, those are the things that we need to lift up as much as or more so than going vertical, in my opinion. And also things like how, how, how can we take advantage of a demographic that exists right now that may not be here for a very long time? In those folks that have been here for a long time with their families have either inherited or purchased homes, you know, before 2000 for under $30,000 that are going to see might, might choose to, you know, cash out and move, move out of the community with a huge profit. Is there any way that we can encourage folks to potentially put deed restrictions on their house for, for residents, for year-round residents that require that alone? That's a really simple thing. And Commissioner Fiedler has an article that I think he should share with everybody. Talking about how like places like Whistler and other kind of ski towns, how you, how you save the ski town. There are like these two different markets being created. Because a lot of folks are kind of subscribing to saying those kinds of deed restrictions. And I think I, I wonder if we could combat the crazy market that's going on now with something like that. As well as I, I would love to visit short-term rental caps on the county to send the message that, you know, this is not, this is, we, we want to combat and keep the scales from, from flipping to a majority percentage of landowners or homeowners as second homeowners.
And I, anybody that wants the data, and maybe I'll just go ahead and share it to the planning commission. I shared it with the board. We have, we are tracking all of the shore terminals in the county. We have quite a bit of data. And, and we do compliance on a regular basis. John has really stepped up and taken the compliance program and, and is routinely checking. So we have, we have some great data for anybody that would like to. I'll just, I'll just send it out. You don't have to ask me for it. I'll just go ahead and send out the spreadsheet. We, we divided up the community, so it's on the county side, not, not the city. But on the county, we've gone through and just put them into different areas within, in the county and to just kind of see what the saturation is like and where we're seeing the highest concentration of short-term rentals. It's surprisingly West Park. And I think followed by Twin Lakes. So and, and again, I, I think to that point there, I think a talking point eventually would be are, are high densities of STRs appropriate in the village of Twin Lakes or where there's not centralized infrastructure. Again, that, that might be a community that, that we find a concentration of short terminals a hard thing to support. So we do have that data if those conversations are, are ready to be having any of those different areas of the county. And so I'll just furnish that to everyone because we have been tracking it closely. We've also been just looking at percentages and, and I don't think we've exceeded a 5% saturation level, but we'll, I'll send out all that information and everybody can take a closer look.
Thanks, Anne.
To her.
Thanks for adding more to our plate, Sarah. Just kidding. Okay, anybody else want to add some more stuff in there? I mean, it all seems pretty easy so far that we can tackle. So have some room. No, I think this is all really great and it's all really good conversation and obviously the housing thing is a super sensitive topic for I think every single person I know in this community. So and there's lots and lots of barriers that we have in there and lots and lots of ideas that I think would be good, but there's definitely in my opinion, a lot of talking about it and not a lot of things happening about it. So I would be all about trying to make some stuff start happening. That'd be sweet. But if anybody, if nobody else really has anything else to add for this evening, we can look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn for the evening.
Thanks, Abby. Does anybody else want to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of adjourning? Hi.
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 Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.